I'd like to call the board education meeting for Wednesday, May 22nd, 2013 to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein is excused. Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Wadkowsky is excused and I... Thank you. Has the meeting been properly hosted?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Fledge of Legions. The Fledge of Legions, good night from the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is community comment. For board policy, up to 15 minutes of resident comment is permitted. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Friends of Franklin Public Schools recognition in Dr. Patz and Mrs. Schleter.
Good evening, everybody. This is a highlight for us, particularly for the board, because we have the opportunity to acknowledge some people that really add a lot to our district. Tonight is the first group we're going to honor, is a group of first robotics mentors. For those of you that don't know much about first robotics program, it's an opportunity for our kids to be engaged in some very complex and difficult problem-solving skills that they took culmination of a competition in the spring of the year. The amount of time and effort that our students, our young people, put into these is incredible, as is the amount of time that Mike Dixon, Mark Wood, and I'm concerned, their time is, I don't know if they see their houses in daylight, but they're spending their time. But with that goes the need for some great assistance from some fantastic people throughout our community and the area, and those are the formless mentors. So, first of all, Mike and Margaret, you come up first. These, the people that we're honoring today were nominated by Mike and Margaret, and again, these are two outstanding, outstanding teachers in our school system and do a great job with our kids. And I wish all the kids were here, too, because they are tremendous in the work that they put in, and it certainly is a learning skill. But we'd like to call some people up tonight, with weather, schedules, and so on, and everybody can make it. But a lot of people could come up, which is appreciated. You just find them right here. David Erbin, Jim Sugomire, Tony Foden, Mary Kay Trail, Mark Wilber, and Dave Woods.
Yeah!
Again, these people are really directly responsible for a lot of the successes that our students have, along with the leadership of Mike and Margaret. And maybe Mike and Margaret should say a few words about the assistance that they provide to people in our district.
This is how it always goes, and I'm the only person who speaks sometimes. Thank you very much for awarding our wonderful mentors this distinguished honor tonight. This is actually only half of our mentors that work with us. The other half are mostly senior parents who are over and up great celebrating their children tonight, which is perfectly wonderful. A couple of these mentors have been with me since the very first year of robotics, which was about six and a half years ago, and they're actually standing on the end, Dave Woods and Mr. Mark Wilber. Dave was a former student of John Wudish, actually, most of the time, so that's how he got roped into our district, and currently works as a, I'm going to say, some sort of engineer for Rexxor Corporation. Mark Wilber is our contact at Snap-on Tools, which has been fantastic in providing some tools and equipment for us. Let's see, I've got to come this way. Mr. Erbin, his son graduated and is now at Madison doing geology engineering. Okay. Firstly, I never had him for geology, so I don't know where that came from, but that's fine, tell us if you've been. In the center, green shirt, is Mr. Tony Foden. His son, James, is currently at MSOB studying to be an engineer. And two of the newest members, Mr. Jim Sugomire, and his son is a sophomore on the team, and Mr. Mary Kay Trail, who joined us this year and won our Team of Spirit Award with some fantastic ideas this year. But like I said, this is only half of our very dedicated, mostly parent base, and we are very honored that you are receiving those awards. So, thank you very much.
She did a poor job. So, I actually hung up all the hours that you put in. I'm not going to tell you what that was, in fear that you won't come back next year. But to the board, it was really good luck, and very quiet each. So, I, you know, we can't, the kids get so much out of this by not just hearing it from Margaret myself, but from industry professionals on a day-to-day basis, and we put out some pretty spectacular products at the end of our season, so I just want to say thanks so much.
And on behalf of the district, and particularly the board of education, we want to thank you. This is, your leadership in these areas, volunteers and mentors and so on, is just part of initiative that we plan on pushing forward very, very hard in the next couple of years to even expand it, not only first robotics, but in many other areas, too. So, you're valuable to us, we appreciate all that you do. Number one, you're an asset to our kids, and that's why we're all here. Thank you very much for putting this right. Did you get a picture taken?
Squished together.
Turn your shoulder, turn your shoulder.
You're all-stars, though. You'll be on our website tomorrow.
Thank you, Senator Lewis.
Thank you all again for what you do. The second group that we'd like to honor, I'm not sure they were able to make it, is anybody from the Pantheon Restaurant that made it this time? If not, Chris, would you just say a few words about why they were nominated and what they do for our school district?
Sure.
This is Chris Reuter, who's going to be our new middle school principal. I'm here, currently the associate principal of the middle school. The Pantheon Restaurant is just a great partner for us for a special event that we do on a monthly basis. Chris?
Thanks, Steve. Yeah. The middle school nominated the Pantheon Restaurant, and it serves as our go-to place for our monthly student, month breakfasts, the students that are stand-up students within our building that follow, we have what's called the boss who may become a stand-up student. And we recognize both the students and their parents for their support to help encourage positivity in our school. And the Pantheon has helped partner with us to provide that avenue, that place to celebrate monthly successes of these kids, and they do a phenomenal job. Every time we leave, the parents say, "Wow, I've never eaten great food in my life, and this is a great experience." So, it's a little community-owned restaurant and business, and, you know, we have to thank them for all the work they've done and been very flexible with our staff and our needs.
Great, thanks, Chris. We'll forward them there some difficulty. So, again, thank you all for your efforts. Had we won the Power Ball, we might have been able to give you a mug to go to the Pantheon. So, thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schleter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
They don't have to stay here, so in case they're uncomfortable.
Okay, if you need to leave, feel free to get up and leave.
Don't feel awkward about getting up, everybody does. Thank you again.
We're not kicking you out.
Motion carried on approval of the agenda. Item six, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Oh, does any board member want to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schleter. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extentions, motion carries. And item seven, school board announcements.
I got to go to the middle school breakfast last week, and I thought that was awesome. And they let me bring my daughter. But I got to sit with a family in particular that I won't forget her, because she was so passionate about a couple of the teachers. She just saying, her thing was, I don't know if I should say the teacher's name, but how they made her think outside the box and made her responsible for herself, and how that made, she knows it's going to make her a better student, especially in high school, but for years to come. She said she'll never forget this teacher. And that gave me goosebumps, I thought, that's why we're here. So...
Good point.
I'd like to announce that the First Robotics has offered us some information when they first came in, and Megan is going to put it on board docs for us to read, so we didn't have to have paper copies. So, she'll let us know when that's put on board docs. Any other announcements?
I was wondering if we could talk about the email that we received this week from Mrs. Klein regarding the non-credible source of inaccurate information that was posted to the Franklin Now recently?
That's not an agenda item, and also, that's, that's a public newspaper item, blogger, so...
Well, I guess my point is, is that information came from somewhere, so I'd like to say to you, Mrs. Evans, did you in any way, shape, or form, directly or indirectly, give that information to Kevin Fisher?
That is not an agenda item. Any other announcements?
Then I'd like that placed on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Mrs. Larson, that is not a board item.
I'm making the request that we discuss communications with the school, or school district communications to be placed on the next board agenda.
That's fine. Thank you.
I have an announcement. I was at, attended a high school band concert, that was really well-done, and then last night was the A-Day Band at the middle school. And the progress that these kids make is pretty incredible. And then, not really just for our district, but on Monday, I was at a Girl Scout recognition dinner at the Italian Community Center. That was the girls that received their bronze award, their silver award, and their gold award. And their gold award is like the Boys Eagle Scout. And I can just tell you that there is a lot of community work being done, volunteer work being done, all around southeastern Wisconsin with just that one organization. I'm sure there's, on the Boy Scouts side, it's the same thing, but, I mean, it's just really neat to see how involved they are from all kinds of projects, either with nursing homes, or walking trails, or parks, or whatever it was, so...
You hear more about Boy Scouts than you do about the Girl Scouts. You hear more about the Boy Scouts than you do the Girl Scouts.
Yeah. But there was, I mean, it was a packed room, and it was, it was well-done.
Can I say something, Janet?
Yes.
Just an announcement, last night I attended the city council meeting. As you're well aware, with our referendum and our building process, there are just a multitude of processes that we have to get approved, and permits, and all those kinds of things. And last night, one of the major ones was getting over the hurdle of getting a temporary approval to proceed with some DNR wetland issues. And thanks to our city council, and particularly Mayor Taylor and all the other persons, we were able to get through that hurdle. It's a big one, because had we not been able to do that, conceivably, the project could have been pushed back to not even starting until August. Because, and part of this goes, we have to have DNR people come in and look at things, they couldn't do it till all the snow was gone, and we could spend an hour talking about how that goes, but just kudos to our city fathers for allowing us to move one more step forward, or many, many more steps, but certainly that's there. May I mention the National Night Out, just those who are there? Just so you're aware, with some of the emails that have been transpiring within the board, we have, the date of our board retreat has now come into conflict with the National Night Out, which is August 12th. So, either at the next board meeting, or maybe through emails. I'm sorry, yeah. So, we will, we will need to take a look at possible alternate date, and don't know what that is yet. Maybe, it might be the week of the 19th in August. So, just if you could be thinking about how that might work for you and your calendars and so on, we'll bring it up at a later time, because the National Night Out is, it really is an opportunity for our school district to be somewhat showcased, to be, we handled calendars, as you were, that night, and the public, I think, enjoys coming, little ones do a coloring contest, and so on. So, just so you're aware of those two things, and I just wanted to pass that on to you.
Thank you. School board calendar, regular board meeting on Monday, June 10th, here at the Education and Community Center at 6 o'clock PM. Regular board meeting Wednesday, June 26th, here at the Education and Community Center at 6 o'clock PM. Item nine, liaison reports, personnel and policy. Mrs. Larson?
Thank you. The first policy that we are going to talk about tonight is Policy 1350, which is the Policy for Procedures for Surveys and Other Educational Research. This has been on our list for review for this year, and it has not been reviewed since 1994. And although we get few requests from our, or our principals get few requests to have this type of research done, the principals have made the request, or have suggested that they would like us to keep a policy like this in place, so they have a policy to fall back on, to refer to. They typically get these requests for master's degree work or doctoral research. The changes that would apply to this policy would be the approval process, which eliminates the requester's ability to appeal a denial, and it also included technology now in the rules. And we bring this forward to you with our recommendation to approve it. Are there any questions?
Just one question on striking the language in the, on the policy part, that second paragraph, is that because that would be on the form, or is it in the handbook? Or I'm assuming that's redundant language that's somewhere else?
It's in the footer now, so it really should have been removed when we put the nondiscrim language in the footer. Four or five years ago, we revised our nondiscrimination language and put it in the footer of all our policies. It's just slightly different, so we do need to remove it from the actual policy language.
Thank you.
During your motion to approve the revision to Policy 1350...
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there any discussion?
Can I make one quick point? This is very timely. We just, I was informed today by one of our people at the high school that we had a parent who wants to start a particular athletic club and wants to do a survey of our kids. This would not fall under that kind of thing, because it's not a research-type of activity, it's just more or less to find out a commitment of interest. So, we don't do those, but if we did, we would have to do probably 10 a week to see what kids are interested in, and there are other means to do that. So, just in case that comes across at a later date, that's not part of what we're talking, this isn't educational research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries.
Thank you. The next policy on the agenda is Policy 7310, Competitive Bidding and Negotiated Pricing, and I'll turn that right over to Mr. Milzer, since he is our expert on that.
Thank you. We have a policy on competitive bidding and had that for quite some time. This year, our auditors took a look at it and asked that we modify it or change it somewhat to comply with some of the federal rules regarding grants. So, I talked to them at length about what they were looking for, and really, all we needed to do was add the one line that we have there, so that for items $20,000 or more, if someone wants to use a negotiated pricing model, they would have to come to me and get approval for that. By doing that, I can look for, first of all, where the money is coming from. If this is related to a federal grant, we wouldn't be able to use that, and I can find out what the situation is to see if it's applicable, or if we should be using another model. There aren't many people in the organization that are buying items like that. Mainly, it's technology and buildings and grounds would be the two big ones outside of textbooks. And what we find is that we can't just put a dollar amount to any of these, because there are exceptions that occur. For example, if we're trying to match technology equipment that we already have, and we want to get more of it, we can't put it out on a specification that allows some other brand to come in, and then it's different to try and fit it into our system, or how it works for kids has to be the same thing. When we work with Apple computers, Apple is the only place to buy those. Really, we can buy them from someone else and pay more, or we could buy them directly from Apple and pay less. But there are times, like roofing bids and so forth, we have detailed specifications when we go out for those and allow multiple bidders on that, as long as they're qualified to be in our list. So, we have a number of different situations that come up, and this policy allows us to deal with those and get the correct method going, because what we're trying to do is get the best value. We've had situations in the past where we've bid things out, we get a service that we'll call, let's say, electrical work or something on an hourly basis, and we got a really cheap price. The problem, we found out later, was it takes them at least twice as long to get the work done as the people we had before, so we ended up paying more money, even though we had the lowest price. So, we have to be careful of those kinds of things. The policy allows us to do that. I sent a copy of it to our auditor, they reviewed it, and they said they liked the change in there, and that complies with what they needed and what they had brought up to begin with.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It says, emergency purchases. What would constitute an emergency purchase?
If we had a flood, or a fire, or there was some kind of damage or something going on...
So, basically, the health and safety of the kid type of thing?
Yeah, that would be it. We needed to deal with that immediately, and we hadn't budgeted for that emergency that we didn't foresee, that we could go ahead and take care of that. It's mainly about health and safety, taking care of kids, taking care of the adults, taking care of the buildings and the property of the district.
Okay.
And I had a question on the same thing, but are those emergency purchases, then, after everything is complete, approved by the board?
The payment for those would be they'd show up in your check register, and certainly, you would get an email saying, "This happened, and here's what we're doing about it. It's going to be over and above, we're going to have to make some changes in the budget, but we're going to cover it," that kind of thing. Obviously, it's an emergency, but it doesn't happen very often. There's only a couple of times, I think, I can remember that happening. We didn't go over budget because of it, but we had...
Do I hear a motion to approve the revision to Board Policy 7310?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the revisions to Board Policy 7310, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
And finally, on the personnel and policy agenda, Mrs. Evans, I understand you made a request for a discussion of a policy related to virtual board member attendance at meetings? Would you like to introduce that idea to the board? I think you're looking for some discussion on it.
Yeah, actually, I'm looking for a policy to be made. Actually, when Dr. Patz was out, and I was discussing the agendas with Dr. Miller and Mr. Milzer, we didn't know if we were going to be going into closed session or not, so I wasn't sure if Dr. Patz would be wanting to call in or not. So, I wanted to find out if it was okay to have teleconference in closed session. And that's when I contacted WASB, and they suggested, if we don't have a policy, that they recommended that we had one. And Dr. Miller did, you contacted WASB and sent Mrs. Larson and I some information, and I believe that's what this Pewaki policy is from, as an example. So, when I looked at this Pewaki policy, I believe it said, this policy says they don't recommend having teleconferences in closed session, but you can have conferences in closed session. It's just up to your board, and that you have, it's recommended that you have, you tell the public ahead of time that you're going to do so at the beginning of the meeting. And then, there are other policies that could be sent to the board to look at, that say a board member must state that no one else is present when they're doing a teleconference in closed session. So, I think it might be beneficial to send some of those other policies.
I think the first thing that we need to decide, though, is if the board wants another policy. So, we should probably look for a consensus on that, and then take it from there to see if we want more examples, or if we'd like Dr. Miller to craft something and then bring it back to us. But I think that our first part of our discussion needs to be, do we want, do we want additional policy? I think the entire board should be in favor of something like that. So, I'd like to hear if anybody else has any suggestions or ideas.
I think in light of Dr. Patz, and you never know what's going to happen, I think it's not a bad idea to cover our bases.
Well, and we've used this before, we just didn't have a policy governing.
True, exactly.
So, I completely support adopting, in fact, I wouldn't mind just adopting this, put the Franklin information on it, and covers everything that we need.
Well, except this one does say, we have to talk about closed sessions. Dr. Patz, are you familiar with closed sessions and teleconferences?
Well, I can tell you, the, I guess the caveat to this whole thing is just that everything is done audio. There's no video whatsoever involved in this, and that any part of a meeting, whether it be public or open, can be audio conference with anybody who is unable to attend. And I think, in looking at the Pewaki policy, I think it's a, it's a general policy that fits most needs. You know, there's a couple of caveats, and I think one of the most important ones is making sure that all votes are done via roll call, because it's just too easy to not be able to decipher what an audio recording may have picked up or not picked up. And then, of course, if any part of that meeting is an open session, making sure that there's a constant reference to that, the fact that there's someone on the other end of the line, if you will, and that they are solicited for comment or understanding at all times. So, I think the Pewaki policy is a good foundational piece. I think it could use a little tweaking, a little massaging, if you will, but it certainly is a good starting point. And we've, as someone had just mentioned, we have done these before via phone sitting here, but, you know, we didn't have a policy at that time. But so, either way, it's just one of those things that, as long as we know the procedures that are going to be followed, and either follow the procedures or follow the policy, it's important that it's delineated specifically.
So, I'm hearing that the majority of the board is in favor of a policy, and so then I would ask, Dr. Miller, if you would, craft a document for us on a board member, virtual attendance at a board meeting for us, and then bring it back.
I would be glad to send you some other samples, and would request that you send me feedback for the first draft, so I'll send you some other samples from districts, and I'll include your thoughts and ideas in this initial draft as I bring it forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is Reports and Presentations, the Franklin High School Spain trip approval.
Okay, Dr. Sir.
Hi. Thank you. We have, I don't, do you want to speak?
Awesome.
Come on, introduce all of us, please.
She's very much, much more informed than I am. This is Cheryl Johnson, and Cheryl is representing Paula tonight, because Paula had another commitment. So, you've seen Cheryl come before with her trip, I don't want to say her trip, but we offer two opportunities for our students. So, she's speaking to the second opportunity we offer for our Spanish students, so she will do a much better job of informing you, so I'm very, I saw her sitting there, and I thought maybe she was just coming to enjoy the board meetings. Hopefully, that's why she was here. So, I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Okay, thank you. Well, the World Language Department has, for Spanish, we offer two different trips, and this is, this is the one that goes usually during spring break, and we're really excited about giving our kids this opportunity. So, basically, what we plan, what we would like to do is take some students, I say "we", our department, Paula Dryer is the one who's going to be leading this trip, she would like to take the students to Spain during spring break, which I believe starts March 14th of next school year. She wants to go during, actually, from the 13th through the 21st. They wanted to depart on Thursday, because they get a little bit of a break, a little bit of a discount on the price. And generally, she doesn't know at this point how many students are going to sign up, but between 25 and 35 students are expected. And they plan to go to, I believe, three different cities. They plan on going to Madrid, Seville, and Renata, and visit a lot of the, you know, a lot of the places that most tourists go to when they, when they visit Spain. And it's valuable for the students, because they get a chance to actually put into practice the things... the things that they've done in class. They get to experience the culture firsthand and come back kind of excited about the language and wanting to continue to study and become hopefully fluent speakers someday. So that's the, that's the main idea behind the whole trip. I don't know if I, I'm probably leaving something out.
I think, maybe just, could you give a comparison of the difference between the two trips?
Oh, okay.
Because I think it's important to have the two options for our students because they're very different trips.
Okay, well, I've done both of these. This trip is, the spring break trip, what happens is the, we have a planned itinerary and the students, they stay in hotels in each of the cities and they have specific excursions that they go on. So it's, it's more like a survey of, of a country. And they get to compare and contrast the different cities that they visit. And this, the difference between this trip over spring break and the one that, the home stay that we do in the summertime is that when we do the home stay, the kids stay with specific families and they get a little bit more in-depth with, with the culture because they're living with a family. A lot of kids, it's, I think both of the trips have a place because while some kids really enjoy staying with families, other people, other kids don't want to do that. They want to, they want to learn about it, but they want to be a little bit further, they want to be a little distanced from it. They want to feel more comfortable before they would want to actually stay with somebody, stay in a family, with a family that they've never met before. So we just want to have, we want the kids to have the chance to visit another country, but if that's going to hinder them from doing it, we want to give them the opportunity to actually, to still go and visit the country. So those are the main differences between the two, between the two trips. Reference, there's a free day, like the second to last day. They're free to go, what are their, they're free to go with chaperones, correct? Well, what happens usually is they, the chaperones are always available, like they'll have, you know, like a home base for like the hotel lobby or something like that. They have to go in groups of at least three so that if anything would happen, that they could, they could get some help. And the kids take cards with them with the hotel information, so that way if anything would happen, like they got lost or something like that, they could just get in a cab and find their way back. But, but yeah, they do have some free time to act by themselves and try to practice their language skills.
I had a question regarding the chaperones. The transportation company EF Education Tours is providing a free chaperone for every six students to travel beyond the two, I'm assuming that arrive. But it says that it will not include the parents.
Right.
So like you get to number 13 through 18, who would that next chaperone be?
So then usually what will happen is the lead teacher, like Paula Dryer, she'll, she'll probably have some chaperones lined up so that if, you know, because she doesn't know yet how many kids, how many kids are going to go. So, so she chose, she'll choose another teacher from the, from the high school that could, that could step in if needed. And she would probably plan that out ahead of time, like who she would, you know, and kind of make sure that that person would be available. So she's probably already contacted that person and say, you know, if, if we get to this number of students, could you, would you be willing to step in and chaperone for us?
And it's, it's high school staff. In the case where, when Cheryl came forward, she's bringing in on high school staff person, so then we had to have Mr. Noack step in and have the background check and verify they were somebody that we felt comfortable sending along. And obviously we trust Cheryl, but we still have policy that we follow. But it's, it's always high school staff that we bring along.
Is that's why it's no parents because of the background checks or is there something?
No, it's, we, we choose, it becomes, who do you choose as parents? When, when it becomes that situation. So we prefer that it's a teacher and an educator because it just makes a more even playing field. And parents oftentimes are invited, but they have to pay their way. And that's pretty common in every school district because you would have multiple parents and not be able to make a choice. So we, and we prefer to have educators along just because they're trained to deal with kids in a specific way. And over the years, when, when you work with parents, they tend to be parents on trips and the teachers have to be educators and toe the line and follow the expectations of the school district. So that's why we tend to do it.
So then the cost of the first two that are going are, is just split up amongst the students and then anybody after that is free?
Right.
By the tour company.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the Franklin High School Spain trip?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schlitter, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the district technology update, Ms. Linsky.
I believe I was last here in October and a couple of times a year I tried to come in and give you an update on where we're at with the technology plan. And generally in May, I like to showcase some things and some student work and see what the kids have been doing and some images of where, of how the kids have been using technology. So all the pictures you see in the presentation tonight are actually real images from Franklin of kids using technology in the classroom along the way. I want to spend, focus on really kind of three areas tonight. One is how we've been using technology to support curriculum. That's been a big initiative that we've been working on this current school year. The professional development, I know I always get asked by the school board, what are we doing to help teachers get better at using technology in the classrooms? We'll talk a little bit about professional development and how we did that this year. And then into the future, there's a, you know, where are we heading with the technology plan? What are some things that we still need to work on? Where are things heading as the state and can give you a little bit of future? And the technology in action are just images of things that have been happening in our classrooms. So that's the focus for tonight. So I believe I mentioned, this is one of our math classrooms at the middle school and I can't speak to this higher as well as Chris who's in our audience here tonight. But one of the things that, as Wendy's been working on various curriculum reviews that we've done, as you know, is we've, they've selected software and hardware and technology to support the implementation of those curriculum areas. And these are some of the areas that were in implementation this year. And through that process, so what we have found is back to the, the teachers have to use the technology to deliver the curriculum, which has been a real impact. So we've really needed to help support those teachers in making that happen. So in this case, the math selected a software program called Carnegie Learning, provides some personalized learning strategies where kids can work at their own pace to some degree, as well as some collaborative work, as well as some direct instruction from teachers, some, lots of different avenues for making that happen. We've had two of our, or one of our tech coaches, Chad Kafka, as well as our math coordinator, Amy Cowell, who have been supporting teachers. Amy's been doing it from the math side of it, Chad's been helping from the technology side of it. And we found that that's worked really well as a blended team to help make that happen. So really excited about where they're at. This was grade six through nine that started this program this year. We'll be auditing, Wendy can correct me, softwares and juniors next year?
Just softwares.
Just softwares.
And juniors the following year.
Next year to the program. So we'll be bringing Amy and Chad in to help support them implement. World language, Cheryl left. We've been, they selected a software product called Reality Dodies and Mike Dix has been working with both the middle school and the high school teachers with that particular program. Has some neat kind of like online textbook type features, as well as kids, students can record audio and listen to their speaking and get feedback. And we're in the mix of rolling that out with kids. That's been a real exciting program for them to use in their area. English decided to select a software package called Write Source, which we're still working with. But more importantly, they've been using Moodle and you'll see some examples later where kids are doing, they've decided to deliver in a blended learning model environment. So their classes are online, they're doing mixture of face-to-face, some kids are doing things with discussion boards and such online. It's been a real great, nice delivery model for the English classrooms. And then our tech ad, family consumer ad business, that whole career in tech ad areas. You saw some things with First Robotics here tonight, it fits into that. But all of them have kept some different technologies. Accounting went all online this year. Tech ad has been using some iPads out of the construction sites and looking up documents as well as reviewing safety videos and some of those pieces, as well as the Project Aide Way, actual architectural directing software and such. Family consumer ad went online with their interior design, starting to do some of their interior design using some of those same CAD software. So really great strides and making some steps. And Mike Dix is our technology coach at the high school, supporting them. And Brad Juan Sabar has been helping English, supporting those different curricular areas as they're implementing technology. And we're seeing great successes with the impact it's having on student learning from the result of that. So that's.
Can I answer that question just for a second? That particular classroom, you notice the line green, it's Chris's idea. Chris, would you speak to those schools that came and visited us and the response to what they saw and what we talked about earlier?
Sure, we had a three school districts visit, our eighth grade math lab as well as a couple of language arts classrooms a couple of weeks ago. And Elkhorn School District, Milwaukee Charter School District, Charter School and Denmark School District, which is north of here. And they had seen a presentation that some of the administrative team had done earlier this year in December at this SLATE conference, which was a technology leadership conference. And they were impressed with some of the technology integration we're doing across the school district K-12. And they followed up and wanted to specifically see some of the workouts we had in the middle school. They were able to spend a day and interview teachers, talk to myself and Chad Kafka about some of the different ways we're integrating technology. They were just floored by what our kids are doing, what they know and where they're going. It was, they were very impressed and, you know, they asked, so did you just buy a bunch of technology to do this? And to Louisiana, which we'll probably talk about more, but the thing she was in the beginning, there was a lot of professional development, supported the teachers, we explained the support of a school board and bringing the new process, how Wendy had run the math department through. And the, the teachers embracing this new delivery model, new classroom, new software and curriculum. And we did talk about struggles in the beginning with implementation, about working with parents and having community, our parent feedback and being transparent with their process, how now I'm doing end of the year meetings with teachers that were looking at data, specifically math teachers, and how our students have grown in the first year of implementation, the content core and all those great things going on all at once and success stories that's part of this meeting.
I think just to mention too, Madison area school district came to visit the program as well. I'll add another time.
All right, so we talked a little bit about this professional development. So I always look at it as we have to hit professional development from a lot of different avenues. Different teachers have different needs and we have to go at it from a lot of different angles. So one of those angles was supporting of the curriculum. So our tech coaches are working directly with the content specialists and helping them implement those technology pieces into their classrooms. That might mean, you know, some, some of these software companies, as much as they'd like to be 100% web-based, there's still some technical issues. So they might have been on the phone contacting the vendor saying, hey, our teachers need X, Y and Z and this is what we're trying to do. And they'll say, well, that's, it is supposed to work that way, well, it's not. And so they created that kind of liaison piece to help get the teachers over those hurdles, to get the software doing what we needed to do. But more importantly, they would go in and help sometimes team teach, sometimes help get the teachers ready to teach that, be there when they're introducing it to kids and helping kind of work through any of those logistical pieces. They're the content experts, they know Spanish, they know math, they know those pieces and the tech coaches can help them now take it to the next level. Okay, there's this piece of the software that we could do the X, Y or Z with and helping them kind of help find their ways through it. So that's been a real positive strategy. We also have the vendors come in and do some demonstrations as well, but now when the guys have been running, if you will, and they're in the classroom with kids, the tech coaches are there supporting them along the way and helping make that successful, make that happen. We've tried to get away from what we used to call kind of a sit and get, you know, we'd offer some things, people would come and then nobody had time to go back and do something with it. So we wanted to differentiate their instruction for our staff members, that everybody needs the same thing. And so the, the big strategy we used this year with professional development was around individual teachers or groups of teachers, if it was a grade level team or a content area team, to develop their own goals around technology, how they wanted to integrate into the classroom. So they each wrote a goal related to their personal goals and other goals they had to write within their roles as well. And with some district guidance, just like we want to do with kids, around some best practice parameters that we wanted to see maybe how technology could change some things in the classroom. So that selecting of best strategy practice, identifying where in the curriculum, their learning targets, what they wanted kids to learn from it. The teachers went out and did some research on what is kind of the best practice, what might be some tools out there with the help of the technology coaches saying, hey, we looked at this, you might want to try this, this might be a good tool. And then them implementing it in their classroom. And our, our goal was that they wouldn't implement it just once, but they would pick something that could be universally used across an elementary paper classroom, maybe across content areas, maybe it's, I could do this three or four times. So that the first time in, the tech coach might go in and work with them, second time in, they might do it themselves, third time, the tech coach might be just kind of standing at the door, you know, helping them. And that's time, you know, the teachers are feeling pretty comfortable that they can go in and do this on their own. So that, a little bit of that scaffolding. And we got really positive, we just debriefed last week, got real positive feedback from the teachers, they liked that. It was personal to them, they got to have some ownership in what they wanted to learn. There were still some district guidance so that we're all kind of heading in the same direction, but some flexibility within that to meet that need. We'll make some tweaks and adjustments, but we'll probably follow some kind of a similar process for next, for next year. And then there's still that, all that individual small group, hey, I'm doing this, can you help me with that? You know, I actually read about this, I saw that. And the tech coaches go in and support on an as-needed basis for those kind of onesie-twosie small group scenarios that come up. So making some, I think, great strides. I'm really been impressed with our teachers with what they're doing in the classroom. The kids are excited about learning to see and have access to the tools and to be able to use that for their learning. So been a real positive. Where are we going into the future? Just every year we do an eighth grade student proficiency, was a part of our tech plan and was required by the state. We'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks where the kids will be going, the eighth grade students will be going online and we'll get, so I don't have the data, usually I think this meeting I have the data that I can bring and show you the, the growth that the kids have made or areas that we're going to be using. So we'll use that data to plan for next year. Second bullet, one of the items on our information technology plan is to visit, bring your own device. And I know you all know that we have bring your own device, where kids are allowed to bring their devices in, but they're not all doing that, they're bringing their cellphones in and maybe they're bringing in iPads and laptops. We're to that point in conjunction as a district where we need to think about, how do we get to make sure that not just any device, but a device that we need for learning is in the hands of every kid? And so we have a group right now that's working on that piece of the, of our plan and to terms of developing that plan. So I don't have a lot of information because I think we're meeting next week, we're at the beginning stages, but I wanted to let you know that that's in the works and that we're going to be putting a plan together about how we can get to that point, middle school through high school, a device for every kid around our learning goals and where we want to head with that. So that will be coming. They mentioned the high school renovation, not part of our information technology plan, but just you're aware, I've been intricately involved with that as well. We talk about layout and design and curriculum and technology and what should those new classrooms look like? Been a part of that process and that's been a real interesting and fascinating experience. And when that building is done, hoping to put all the right tools and to support those new learning environments, that's going to be a, a great thing for us to help make those shifts that we've talked about, how technology can support curriculum. And then the last, kind of into the future, I think last time we talked, there was some back and forth about the state student information system, still on hold, if you've been following the articles in the paper or not, but as you know, the state wants to go to, we use Power School as our grading and software and such, they want to go with a statewide system that every school district, you know, all 400 and some would go to the same system. They went through a whole bidding process, they picked a software product and one of the other competing competitors too that has filed a, not a grievance, but a.
Appeal.
Appeal, appeal is a thank you, thank you is the right word? Appeal. They went through the appeal process the first time and they still got denied and now they are appealing it a second time. And I think they can go up to three appeals. So it's on hold until that process is complete and they've exhausted all possibilities. The company that's doing the appeal is a state Wisconsin-owned company in business and I think they will continue to, to fight it to the end. So we know nothing on that yet, once we know what the state decides and we'll make some district decisions about which direction we're going to go and how we're going to handle that. Until we have more information, we're kind of on hold at this point. All right, so just, I won't talk about every single slide, but here's just some technology that action here is a sample of some of the discussions going on in our high school English Moodle classes. This is students doing research at the high school in the library. These are students at the middle school creating a historical figure project at the middle school. QR codes, if you haven't seen the little square boxes or have, use your phone for your own QR codes to find out the latest pricing in the grocery store or other purposes. Using them in education, this happens to be, if the students have done their work, they can scan it and get the answer key to a homework assignment that they are using. So they're using their phones to scan and teachers are using the QR codes also, posting up homework assignments, access to websites where the kids can just go scan it with their phones and get, take some instantly to the information. phones and get, take some instantly to the information the teacher wants them to get access to, so quick way to get access to information. Some students collaborating at the elementary school. Here's some higher-level thinking, you see they're looking, working on maps there, some studies, and notice the combination of paper and technology, I thought that was a light example, that it's not always technology, and different groups of kids doing different things related to the same learning targets. These are some Chromebooks, last year, the middle school wrote a grant for, to the foundation to get some Chromebooks, which are made by Google, they look like a laptop, but they're really a web-based only tool, you can't install any software on them per se, it's a web device, but as we rolled out Google Apps, I mentioned in October, what they're rolling out of Google Apps, online collaboration, online writing, I'll show you a sample of it here in a minute, it's a great tool, it's like a nine-hour battery life, just a great tool for writing, for that purpose, research and web and some other things as well, but we've been primarily using them from writing, and here's just an example from the middle school, students are writing, you can, this is a teacher at the middle school, you can see she can write comments on the side, the kids get that immediate feedback, they don't have to hand in a paper, wait for the teacher to go home, look at it, write notes all over it, send it back, it's real-time, instantaneous, and just as importantly, the bottom picture is students giving each other feedback, so some peer reviews and peer feedback around writing, so they all have access to the different documents, multiple kids, students if you haven't used Google Apps, can be writing at the same time, in the same document, and we're also using it a lot as an administrative team and a staff team when we're at meetings and such, we're all part of Google Doc, we're all adding content, collaborating, and everything's done and ready to go when we leave the meeting, so some great tools that are happening with the Google Apps integration into our classrooms. Goes even into the gymnasium, a lot of capturing a video and/or for them to play back, work on technique, look on strategies, sometimes they capture a video like this, maybe in physics class, to analyze all height and how fast it's going to drop, and some of those pieces, but in this case, they're capturing some, demonstrating some skills. Here's students, how many times they take out their phones, a cap of energy of notes that were on the board or something like that, they still are expected to take notes and all that, but sometimes if they just need to capture something quickly, we find that even as adults who are someplace are like, oh, I don't need to write that all down, I'm just going to take a picture with my phone and I've got the information, so real quick way to capture things. Here's a student just using their phone as a calculator. Blogging, we've got some blogging going on across the district, this happens to be an elementary, as many of the teachers wrote a goal around more writing with the kids and more in-depth writing, and they've introduced some blogging at the elementary schools, it's a closed system, I guess, for blogging, it's not necessarily out there for the public, but where the kids can blog and respond to each other's posts. And that is it, questions?
I would say you're all very busy with your occupation, so if we ever get the chance to be into our schools and see some of this in action, I think you'd be very impressed, our teachers are doing a great job, and the kids just love this, because we often talk those things, they're so far in front of us with technology, and they utilize it, and it really has, I think, had a big impact in our learning levels throughout our school, and people like Chris and many, many others are really leading the charge on that, and I keep doing things every year as we go by.
I know the district has really embraced the Google technology and the apps and the Google Drive and all that stuff, is, we're looking at making a purchase decision on a device for children, for my kids, and would you recommend a Google tablet? You recommend a Google, what was that book, a Google Chromebook?
Chromebook, yeah, you know.
Or an iPad, I mean.
Yeah, if money is no object.
Little bit of an object.
If money is no object, buy a full-fledged laptop, I mean, that would be enough, if you want my opinion, a full-fledged laptop, when they're writing, they need a keyboard to truly work process at a speed that they can, you know, think, you can get a wireless keyboard to go with your iPad too, but I guess if you're going to choose, money is no object, I know that's the most expensive choice, I would suggest.
I would think a laptop too, but some of those conferences we went to, there were no laptops, everyone had tablets, and I was just, I mean, there's a lot of different kinds, that's why I was wondering what your thoughts were.
Well, we're having that conversation, as we talk about that bring your own device, and if we're going to make a recommendation to parents about what the specs need to be, or if we're going to have parents want to purchase devices for the kids, what that would that look like, and really it's based on what you want it to do, and we've listed what we want that device to do and what device can accomplish that, so if you want a device that can do it all per se, a laptop's going to be able to do all those educational things for you for the most part, there are some limitations on the iPad for some of the things we're doing, some of the software programs that we're currently using won't run on an iPad, even the web-based tools, so again, their purpose is for school, and you want them to bring it to school, my recommendation is a laptop, that doesn't mean there's not a place for iPads, we're using them very well in certain scenarios, Chromebooks are serving a great purpose for what we're using them for there, and the price point for a Chromebook at $2.79 is what we're paying for a Chromebook versus a $1,000 laptop or an $800 laptop, you know, and a $500 iPad in between, you know, that's your range of prices for those different tools, so.
Does the Android side make more sense though? I guess if I was looking at a tablet, I wouldn't necessarily look at the Apple, but with all the Google stuff going on, not necessarily?
You know, Android plays nicer with Google, Apple and Google don't play so nice together, so if you're trying to do Google Docs on an iPad, it doesn't, it works, but not as cleanly as it does on the Android, works really great in Pearl on a laptop, so.
Got it.
I'm just going to come off of that, Dr. Pat said, yesterday, I was at, day before yesterday, I was at Countrydale, and seeing the first graders pull their laptops out, and they treat them so well, like they're, and then to see them put them back, and they know exactly where they went and how they get plugged in, I was really amazed at how efficient they are at six.
That's one of the big things, you know, when the technology boom hit schools, everybody was so afraid these kids were going to take iPads and laptops and throw them down a hall and hit each other over the head with them and everything, kids are very, very, we underestimate kids, they are very respectful of tools that we put in their hands, they know them well, they treat them well, and, you know, we have accidents occasionally, but they do, they can be trusted.
Yeah, I mean, the years I've been here, I mean, literally, I think we've had maybe two or three where, you know, sitting on the edge and got bumped and a screen crashed or something, but minimally, considering how many hundreds of devices we have, so they do take really good care of them.
I'd just make one comment, the thing Franklin does that I think is unique is provide extensive training to the teachers and follow-up, because it's a major shift in the delivery of instruction, so hats off to Luanne, because she's been leading the charge with the tech coaches and working diligently to ensure the teachers are supported in the shift, and I think the teachers would tell you, while they have anxiety, they do have a really quality group of people that are assisting them in all of the new work, and I think Chris would attest to that.
If I could just add one more thing, not to belabor this point, but let alone the fact that the teachers and so on and all the Luanne's work, there are some people behind the scenes that are fixing everything all the time too, and making sure we have repairs and help desks and so on, and they do a tremendous job, because as you would guess, in an organization our size and all the technology we have, things go down once in a while, and they are fantastic, we're very fortunate.
It takes a team, it takes a team to keep the things running and to help teachers use them effectively, and we all play a role in making that happen, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
I am C, is the Human Resources Report, ratification of the 2012-2013 Wage Agreement between the Franklin Public School District and Secretary Office Assistant and Educational Assistant Bargaining Unit, Dr. Miller?
I would just ask for a motion for the board to approve the 2.7% wage increase for our Secretary's Office Assistance and Educational Assistance, so.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion?
How is this different from the discussion we had at the last meeting?
Very different group.
What's a different group, completely?
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, Secretary is. I'm not sure what meeting you're referring to or exactly what discussion, but this increase had been approved by the board prior to negotiations with this group, and we successfully negotiated to this end, and now the board must ratify that agreement, so I'm.
Both parties have to ratify, they have to take it back to their members, and they all say yes, and then the final piece is for the board to then ratify its portion, to say that it's all approved.
These are represented employees, they're still represented?
Oh, and last week, we were talking about non-represented.
Correct, thank you, I wasn't sure what group you were referring to, yes, this is a represented group.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Larson and a second by Mr. Nielsen, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
I say yes, Mr. Alexander Dovitch.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next to me have the Treasurers Report, and Mr. Milzer has offered to give that today, thank you.
On the Treasurers Report for May 2013, in the General Fund, we have $17,585,798. In the Debt Service Fund, we have $2,777,173, and prior to June 26th, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of $4 million for the May 31st, June 15th payrolls and accounts payable.
Thank you, any comments or questions?
Jim, would you just quickly make a, let us know or let the board members know that may be relatively new, what points in time we get state aid, and when those benchmark dates are, just so we can have a little bit of a handle on that?
We do get some state aid in the fall, but very little, most of it comes in the spring, and at the end of the school year, in June, we get quite a bit, and then we even get some into July and the beginning of August, and that, we are able to count that in the school year that we're in now, but the state rules are set up to make sure that the state has the money in their hands the longest amount of time possible, so that they can get the interest and run state government, and then to give it to us, parceling out a little bit here, a little bit there throughout the year, so that's one of the hurdles that we face in going through the year, is that we don't get tax money until we're halfway through the year, and most of our state aid comes at the end of the year.
I think that has a lot to do with the collection with property taxes and the people on installments.
Right, we're affected by that too, it's generally a pretty steady percentage, up until maybe 2008, when the economy went bad, more people were taking multiple payment method, but it didn't affect it too much, we still get quite a bit of our tax money in January and February.
We loaded a bond fund, yes, is that really accomplished? There was what, $9 million, almost 10?
Right.
Is, are those funds sitting here or are they somewhere else?
They're somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thanks. And I am 11, Board Meeting Debriefing, does anyone have any comments on the meeting? Hearing none, future agenda items, first draft of the 2013-2014 Budget on June 10th, and Board Conference Attendance Reports on the NSBA Conference, and then the WASB Spring Workshop on June 10th, the RTI Update on June 10th, and Budget Update on June 26th.
We have that forum for the conference all set to go, we piloted it.
You emailed that out, but is that the only way to get to it, is it also on Board Docs? Is there any way to put it on there?
Yeah, that's where it should go.
For June 10th, can we have an update for the OPEP Committee? Looks like we're maybe going to have a meeting that first week, that'd be good to have something on there on the 10th.
Mr. Alexander Dovitch, it was you and Mrs. Witkowski that went to the Spring Workshop?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Schleter, second by Mr. Nielsen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at 7:04.